Meeting for June 17, 2025 is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benuelos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bead. Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Mary Lash is present.
Next item on the agenda is a special vote to allow participation for Alderman Bug, who has requested permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80 based on reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. Is there a motion to allow Alderman Bug to participate remotely? The motion was made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Next agenda item, Madam Clerk, could you please read the approval of the minutes?
25-0489, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, June 3, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
So moved.
Second. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, June 3, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented? The motion was made by Alderwoman Smith and seconded by Alderwoman Gart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Mayor's report, tonight we have Jason Bauer, the interim director of Public Works, but I'll let you, Jonathan, kick it off first. Just tell us a little bit about what we did this weekend and what we have coming up for events in the city.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, Mayor. Great weekend here in Aurora, obviously, Juneteenth, the event for the African-American Men of Unity was certainly a success, 24th anniversary. Let's give them a round of applause for the great things that they do for our community. Mayor, if you'd like, you want to take a second, you can step down here. We're going to actually do the official Juneteenth proclamation here for the City of Aurora, which is really exciting, obviously a meaningful day for our African-American community, and actually, believe it or not, this year it's the 160th anniversary of the day that marks the official end of slavery here in the United States of America. So we really thank again the African-American Men of Unity, in addition to our own African-American Heritage Advisory Board for the great work that they do in not only promoting African-American activities here in the city, but certainly promoting Juneteenth and all that it means here for the City of Aurora. So Mayor, I'll give this to you. If you'd like to step up to the mic.
Sure. We're good.
Yep.
Does that work?
Yeah.
All right. Whereas June 19, 2025 marks the 160th anniversary of the day that marks the official end of slavery in the United States, and June 19 will always hold a significant place in black history, which is American history. Whereas after decades of advocating, organizing, and fighting, Juneteenth became a federal and state holiday in 2021, and on February 8, 2022, the City Council of our city, Aurora, Illinois, approved Juneteenth as a city holiday, leading the way for other municipalities and institutions to do the same thing. Whereas on Juneteenth, we commemorate the day and honor the tireless work of abolitionists who made it their mission to deliver the promise of America for all Americans, and whereas on Juneteenth, we honor the generations of local ancestors who advanced the movement, paved the way, and built a strong foundation for us to stand upon. Whereas we lift those who are the protectors of our culture in the present and the promise of black heritage in the future, like the African-American Men of Unity led by community leader Ricky Rogers and the Aurora African-American Heritage Advisory Board. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Lash, do hereby proclaim Thursday, June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth, Day of Observance in the City of Aurora. So. For those who don't know, Ricky Rogers has been a very active member of our community and a pioneer long before it was popular to recognize Juneteenth, holding an event here in the City of Aurora, bringing out youth, empowering youth in our communities. Got to work with him on the East Aurora School Board, and it's great that we were able to support that event this coming, or this past Saturday, and it's great that all City of Aurora workers will have the day off on Thursday. So please celebrate and take the day off.
So the mayor will now read a proclamation for Pride Month here in the city. Obviously, the city was very active as it pertained to Pride Month this year, the Pride at the Plaza event, certainly the pride flag raising, and of course, the Aurora Pride Parade, which took place just a few weeks back. Certainly a success here in the city, so we'll have the mayor read that proclamation next.
Whereas the City of Aurora strives to be more inclusive and equitable community for all, including our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ community members, and whereas members of the LGBTQIA+ community in our city, throughout our state, across our nation, and around the world have collectively worked to overcome gender, race, sexuality, and class adversity, combating social stigma and demanding visibility, and whereas we recognize the valuable contributions of the LGBTQ+ community, rejoice in the many triumphs and recall the continued trials and the quest for full equity and equality. And whereas in that recognition, we salute such advocates as the Aurora LGBTQ Advisory Board, Aurora Pride, Aurora Mutual Aid, local businesses in Aurora, and individuals who have gone above and beyond to advance the progress of the LGBTQ+ community, and whereas working collaboratively and authentically with our LGBTQIA+ community members, advocates, allies, and organizations, we can continue to make Aurora a more inclusive and equitable city. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Lash, do hereby proclaim June as Pride Month in the City of Aurora, and ask everyone to join me to recognize the resilience and determination of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely and authentically. Thank you.
We do have a member here today of the Aurora LGBTQ Advisory Board. If you'd like to step up and take a picture with the mayor.
And if you want to say a few words, talk a little bit about the scholarship that you're working to put together here in the city.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Mayor Lash, and it was an honor for me to represent the LGBTQ community as a grand marshal of the Pride Parade, and as a transgender woman, it's nice that we are finally recognizing some of the elders of our community, such as myself, and we also have a scholarship that is for the LGBTQ community, and it's named after my late spouse, Danae Mallon, who was the first trans woman to get her gender reassignment surgery covered by Medicare. She was a little 74-year-old woman who fought the government and won, and that was in 2014, and the result of that over the last years has changed the way that transgender healthcare has been handled by most insurance plans, and she's a woman who made a difference, and it's very important that she be remembered in these incredibly turbulent political times that we're experiencing right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for recognizing our woman.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I'd like to invite up also actually Curtis Wilson, see Curtis Wilson in the audience for the African-American Heritage Advisory Board, if you'd like to talk a little bit about the significance of Juneteenth, in addition to maybe any events that the board's going to be doing coming up.
Can I say a quick public comment? Or should I do it now?
Why don't you do it now?
Do you have a time or not?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So as the new chairman of the African-American Heritage Advisory Board, it's a pleasure to speak before you, and thank you, Mr. John, for the opportunity. So Juneteenth is truly a significant event in the African-American community, as well as the United States, such that it heralded the end of slavery for folks that were in Texas where they had not heard for two years after the Emancipation Proclamation that slavery had ended. It wasn't until a few months after the actual Civil War ended that the Union troops read to them the Emancipation Proclamation and said, "You guys are free," and then that's where the first Juneteenth came in. And so with that, I am grateful that our city has acknowledged this holiday. It's a federal, state, and citywide holiday. I'm grateful as a descendant of slaves, it's me, my father, his mother, her, my paternal grandfather was born a slave, so I actually was able to talk to my grandmother, who actually talked to a slave, and could tell you what it was like a day in the life of. It was not the fun, you know, stuff that we may see now, as it's been kind of whitewashed per se, but I am grateful for that experience and just to know that with the Juneteenth flag, the colors are red, white, and blue. It's that reason to represent America, because slaves, descendants, were Americans. I'm a proud American. Despite what I've been through, I am a proud American. I am here because I love my country, I love my fellow citizens, the diversity and the tapestry that is us, and so again, Juneteenth represents that for me and for our community. So thank you so much.
One more presentation tonight. This is going to be a Mayor's Award of Excellence, and I tell the community here tonight, I think when a lot of people hear about the Grand Army of the Republic Military Museum, one name is synonymous with that, and that's our museum director, Eric Pry, who's sitting right here today. Eric, you could come on up if you'd like. Eric Pry. Eric Pry has been named the Museum Professional of the Year by the Illinois Association of Museums. It's a statewide award. He's been with the GIR for a long time. He's seen it when it was vacant, and there was nobody in it. He helped lead the reconstruction efforts behind it, and now today it's a prominent museum right in the heart of Aurora's downtown. Eric certainly deserves this award. We'll have Mayor Lash read the award in front of him there.
Pretty big thing to win a statewide award. It's honorably presented to the Mayor's Award of Excellence, to Eric Pry for being named the Museum's Professional of the Year by the Illinois Association of Museums, and for your hard work in transforming Aurora's Grand Army of the Republic Military Museum into an award-winning attraction, now serving as a vibrant center for education and remembrance. Thank you so much, Eric.
Congratulations, Eric Pry!
I just want to thank the mayor and City Council for all of your support over the years, and especially Dan Barrero, who I used to work for, when he was leading community services. You know, this is quite the honor, and I just want to thank everyone for their support. And if you haven't checked out the GIR Military Museum, come on down. It is a free institution. We have wonderful exhibits, including our Fueling the Front Lines exhibit, which was put together by 11 Aurora University students this year. They've done wonderful work, and yeah, come check it out, and say hi to Logan, our museum assistant, too. He's doing great work as well. Thank you again.
That'll conclude the presentations for now. We're going to get to some from Public Works. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.
So we've had a couple of questions. We voted on the bond issue that's going to pay for what you're about to see. Just wanted to give the City Council sort of an update as to what's been happening at River Edge Park. It looks like we're on schedule, and I'll let you have the microphone and PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you very much. Jason Bauer with the Department of Public Works, and I'm here to just go over River Edge Park. As the mayor stated, we met very early on in his administration and just gave him an update on River Edge Park, and he thought it would be a great idea to run through this project with everybody. We've got a lot of new council members, and there's a lot that's happened since we've been here last to discuss the project. So we've got some representatives from R.C. Wegman here. They're the construction managers, so if there's anything, you know, real detail-oriented that I can't answer, they'd be more than happy to jump up here, too. So why did we do this project? Why did we need to expand River Edge Park? So there were basically two main issues. We call them front of house and back of house. So if you think of back of house, everybody that came to that facility that was a touring band, they were there in their buses, and then we had a trailer back there for them to eat their meals out of and for their managers to run out of. So there were inadequate facilities in terms of dressing rooms, restrooms. They had nowhere to do their laundry. They had no green rooms. They had nowhere for their staff to sit around besides the tour bus, or a trailer, or out in the sun in the back area. So the size of the venue was about 6,000, about 6,000 patrons, that's what we could hold in it, so the size was also a limiting factor for some artists. So they had issues with the capacity, and they had issues with the facilities. Now, in the front of the house, that's basically the patron experience. If you've been there, you know that we have to bring out a lot of porta potties, which not everybody likes to use, so we were short on restrooms, and at a lot of times in the bigger events, the wait times to get a drink were extremely long. So we wanted to address all those issues with this project. This project's been in the works for, I think the initial conception of this was probably 10 or more years ago, so this is something that's been in the works, and we started on that last year, or two years ago with the architect. So what are we going to do with this, with this project? So we're going to do, we're currently building a new backstage facility, a brand-new restroom facility. We're improving the south gate, where is basically the bridge landing. That's why the bridge has been closed this year, is because it's not safe for anyone to go through there, bicyclists, pedestrians, and whatnot. And the beverage pavilion. The beverage pavilion's going to be on the backside of that hill that was in the middle of the park, and that's going to have 20 service windows, and there's actually going to be a new VIP area up on top of there. That was a really cool idea that the architect came up with. We are happy that they suggested that. We're also going to have a new lawn seating area to the south of that beverage facility, and that's going to have anywhere from 1,000 to 2,000 new seating, or new seating for 1,000 to 2,000 new patrons. We'll start that slow and see how it goes. We don't want to just all of a sudden go from 6,000 to 8,000 and be overwhelmed, so talking with ACA, that's something we would kind of roll out a little slow, just to make sure we can keep up with everything. In addition to that, we're expanding some of the hardscape areas so that we can get more vendors during Kindle. I believe this last time there were 64 vendors, and we think that with this expansion, we can probably add anywhere from 20 to 30 more. They won't really know until they see the final layout and they get in and work around, but this year it won't be that expansion. That would be in the 2026 Chris Kindle Market. Already went over, Ratio Architects, they were the designer, and R.C. Wegman, they're tackling all the construction for us. So just to, we're all very familiar with the layout of the site, but until you actually see it and see where all the different things are going, it's kind of hard to see. So if you look down on the right side of your screen, that C, that's the new south gate, and that's basically where the pedestrian bridge comes across, and that's where the signal is that would get you across the street into the ATC parking lot. And you can see in that green space area, we've got two big Jumbotron monitors. Those are the two black squares that you see there, and then the restroom facility to the north, or to the east of that, and the beverage pavilion to the north, and then all the way back behind stage is the new backstage building. So to go over all of those, this kind of makes them pop in contrast to the existing buildings. So you can see the backstage building all the way to the left, it's obviously behind the backstage, and then the existing VIP deck to the, basically to the, to the east of that, and then those are all the new facilities in blue. So just some renderings that we had done. This is the backstage facility. It is two floors. There's an elevator, so it's accessible. There's new storage. It's kind of covered by the banner at the bottom, but there's some overhead doors so that we can get some larger materials in and out, and then there's an outdoor patio there with the string lights, and then another one up top, which would only be accessible to anybody that's on the tour. So this would be the new beverage pavilion. So in addition to the two new Jumbotrons, we actually already purchased this Jumbotron, I want to say, two years ago, so we have this one already, and we're going to mount that one there, and you can see all the various service windows and the big wide patio area that would be for lines to queue. That was another issue, was, you know, the line, so this is going to be a lot easier to get in and out of. And then this is the upper, the VIP deck, for lack of a better term. So this is, basically, we built up the back of the hill, and we're using the beverage pavilion. There's a massive retaining wall there, so we picked up a little seating on the back of the hill and a little bit more with the VIP deck. And just showing that pavilion area, another rendering. And then this would be the south gate, so this would be walking off of the pedestrian bridge, so immediately off the pedestrian bridge, you would enter into, if you've already passed security, depending how each individual event is set up, you might be able to walk directly into the park. There's a series of sliding gates that we can organize the entrances, whether we want to have things locked off, if we want to allow free flow from the bridge in, and you can kind of see those, those sliding gates there. And then this is a rendering that the architects did that show the expansion of the Chris Kindle Market coming to the south. All of the booths that are down there in the lawn area, those would be kind of the expanded area. We do lose a few up towards the beverage pavilion because they won't wrap around there because we're going to actually use that for Chris Kindle Market. That would be where people can go to get the warm wine, the glue vine. So ultimately, when that is operational, we won't have booths there, but they would all be relocated to the south and actually expand quite a bit. And then just a few more renderings showing it with, in use for a concert. So just a recap of where we're at to costs. We hired R.C. Wegman. Their fees for managing the project are listed there, and then we actually, at their recommendation, we did bring them on pretty early in the process, and they did some forecasting for how long some of these buildings were going to take, and since we could work backstage and not disrupt Kindle, we actually broke out a very early bid package that we could get things moving back there, and then we actually worked alongside the Chris Kindle Market folks for a good portion of the winter. The next bid package came out later in the year. I think we awarded that in November, December, so the total project cost a little over $23.5 million for the construction of the facilities and all the work on the site and Wegman's fees. So again, the bid package won. We were trying to get out ahead to do all of the early work for this facility and then the backstage, and then the remainder of that facility was bid out with everything else. So got quite a few bids. First bid package was somewhere around 30, 86 for the second bid package, so about 116 bidders, so we got really great bids. We bid it at a perfect time because everyone was trying to gear up for the year, so we worked in the middle of the summer. That worked out really well for us. We got a lot of great local bids. As you can see there, about $8 million of the 23 are within 15 miles of the project site, and quite a few are within Aurora as well. As far as scheduling goes, it's a really complex project, given that Chris Kindle Market starts loading in October, and they're really not done loading out until sometime in January, so right out of the box, we're down to a nine-month window, and when you consider that two of those months are January and February, which aren't the greatest to be doing work outside, it's pretty tricky. But they've been doing great. We got off to a little bit of a slow start. We had some foundation redesigns we had to do, based on soil issues, and we actually found some more budget-friendly ways to do some of the foundations. It's pretty intricate out there. The beverage facility is surrounded by, surrounded by, and actually over top of some very large pipes, so we had to go all the way down to bedrock, so we've got foundations out there that are 25, 30 feet deep that are bearing on the bedrock. So once we got out of the ground, things have been going a lot smoother. Our target right now is to have interim completion by October of this year and final completion by May of next year. That keeps us on line for being ready for Kindle Market this year and being ready for concert season next year, and ACA's already working on trying to book acts, and they've already got a lot of positive review on the new facilities that'll be backstage, both from touring managers that they've been speaking to and acts that have been here before that are definitely more interested in the expanded facilities. The only, you know, once we get a little further along, we'll see how things shape up. We might, if we've got any unsightly areas that we're still working on, we would work with Kindle to put temporary screening up, and maybe they would have holiday themes or something like that, just so that it keeps people out of areas they shouldn't be, but we don't anticipate that there would be any fewer booths than they already had last year. And just to let you all know, some of the next things that we'll be coming to council for, as I mentioned, we had some issues with the foundations, some utility conflicts. It worked out to be a lot cheaper to work with Ratio rather than relocating those utilities. As I said, some of them are pretty large. We could have moved them, but just doing a little bit of redesign, they came up with some great ideas where we didn't lose any footprint inside the building, and they were able to work around those. We'll also be coming with the Jumbotron purchase, the site Wi-Fi and cameras, and then all the various access controls for the doors, and then the furniture, fixtures, equipment, and speakers. So with that, definitely more than willing to answer any questions, and any questions from the council?
I do.
Alderwoman Smith?
I have two questions, Jason. I don't know that they're going to be for you. The first question would be, once this is in full completion, what do we see as approximate yearly revenue inside the park as far as food and beverage, entertainment, et cetera? So do we have anybody from finance that could answer that? Is that impossible at this point?
It's probably more of an ACA question. I don't think they're even going to really fully know until they see how things lay out and exactly whether they're going to get an extra 1,000 or 2,000 people. I think once we have the first year behind us and we know what kind of acts we can attract with the better backstage facilities, that's going to help, too.
We have to have some, and note, not to pressure it, but we have to have some kind of idea. We wouldn't have gone forward with this project, and we're not, you know, we can't leave out the fact of what we will be adding in all those revenues outside of our city and all of our restaurants and bars around the city during those concerts. So at some point in time, that would be a really good number to-
Yeah, we can definitely put that together.
-try to put together. And then my other question, also not for you, there's supposed to be some 2025 entertainment summer stuff going on in Wilder Park, is this the summer, my understanding?
I'll just answer that question briefly, and if the chief staff wants to, but so there is, of course, this disrupts our whole summer concert series. I know some of the shows are going to be shown at the Paramount, and then a big one that we're trying to sort out currently is Fiesta's Patrias. I think once we have a comprehensive plan, we can certainly come before the council to share that. It'll be a hybrid of working together with some local bars to spread out the entertainment as well as a citywide parade. We're working with the, not citywide, sorry, but the larger parade route versus the smaller parade route, and then using some of our own parking lots to have some lower-dollar entertainment, perhaps shutting off Stope and using the Millennium Park for some entertainment. So it's trying to spread it out because it's usually a larger two-day event, and then also working with the police to try and mitigate some of the issues they've had post Fiesta's Patrias.
Okay.
But the other one, I don't think anybody from ACA is here, but Shannon, if you have a second, tell us which ones are moving to Paramount.
So but aren't, didn't we plan, and perhaps this didn't, this didn't happen, perhaps it's not happening, that we would utilize Wilder Park for smaller concerts this summer since we didn't have River Edge, like local band-type things, outdoor things that were bigger than Stope Island, and so perhaps that didn't happen-
Can you answer that?
Yeah, there was a plan, there were some plans in place to use- Yeah, there was a plan, there were some plans in place to use Wilder. But I think we found a more economic approach.
So Shannon Cameron, chief of staff, there were two events planned for Wilder Park with those things being displaced that were normally at River Edge Park, and that was Downtown Live. And then it was also Fiestaes Patrias. Both due to the Aurora Civic Center Authority having to move a considerable amount of equipment, create a stage, including safety elements, fencing, barricades, et cetera, to make it safe, it would come in an enormous cost to the city. So due to our financial situation and trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer money, we talked to Aka about it, came up with a good plan. We've had several meetings about Fiestaes right now to try to make sure that it can be a wonderful event for the city as it has been, and in this temporary year where we're displaced, be safe, and then also help to prop up our downtown and, you know, help our small businesses. The Wilder Park Downtown Live, it would have been a considerable expense. Again, Paramount has decided to do that concert at a very low cost at Paramount, so that will still be coming in the downtown, still have a great night of entertainment. The Paramount is also doing a lot of one-off events throughout the summer to kind of fill in what would be River Edge Park entertainment, but it's going to be happening at the Paramount Theater instead.
That's good information to know. Didn't know that until just right now.
Yeah, no problem. Yep.
Any other questions from the council on River Edge? Alderman Burrow?
Mayor Lash, thank you. So I think it makes sense, all these improvements we're making to River Edge Park. But one of the other shortcomings and things that, that, you know, patrons talk about a lot is the, the, the needs for, the special needs population. When you go to the concerts, you see more and more individuals in wheelchairs and whatnot, senior citizens, and, you know, the issue is getting to the park. And so, you know, I don't, I don't see anything in the, in these plans, renovations, addressing that issue, because that seems to be a big need still.
So one of the things that we did, I want to say, two years ago, is we actually moved the ADA drop-off. So there is a dedicated ADA drop-off on the opposite side of where that backstage building is. So there's dedicated parking there. And we actually have transport vehicles that'll pick up someone in a wheelchair from them, from there, drive them to their car up to the ADA entrance to the park. And from the ADA, ADA entrance in the park, they basically just have to walk straight up to the designated seating area. That's, that's right there at that, at that entrance. And it's, it's worked out pretty well. We've got, I think, three of those, so we can accommodate quite a few people by just doing smaller trips, because it's not very long. Originally, we tried setting it up at the post office across the street, and it didn't really, it wasn't working out too well. So we've actually moved it, and it's working out well. And those carts, again, a person doesn't even have to get out of their wheelchair. It's got a ramp that comes down. They can get right on, and somebody can sit with them while their, their family just, you know, walks behind. And it's worked out pretty well. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Can we get this presentation sent to the alderman, this, that you just did to us?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, thank you, Mr. Bauer. This concludes mayor's report. Moving to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
And would you be willing to read the rules of public comment?
I will. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Edward Kirch.
You can go right there. Mr. Kirch, you have three minutes.
Okay. Mayor, thank you for letting me talk to Casey today. It was helpful. Alderman Garcia, thank you for your concern. That was helpful. I have two concerns. My daughter bought a building on Gladstone, and we had to evict tenants right away. The tenants had the inspection department come in before we even closed. And the tenants went downstairs, the two of the tenants, and said, if you don't let the inspectors in, we will call ICE. Okay? Then, a few months later, we needed heat in the building. We got a permit, a very expensive permit to put heat in the building. So we put four brand-new furnaces in. And on Friday, the city stopped us from putting the furnaces in because the contractor had open permits somewhere else. So the tenants went Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, a holiday, and Tuesday, they went without heat because they delayed our permit. Okay? For no reason. 2/16/05, I was in the process, the city asked if they could inspect it. The tenant said no. City came out and inspected it anyway. Okay? Which didn't actually hurt my feelings, but it was fine. So we, they wanted us to paint some stuff outside. So instead of painting it, we sided the building at a very expensive rate. One of the decks, which is 18 inches off the ground, had a couple rotten stairs. All we had to do was remove the rotten stairs, because there was another staircase down. And they said that they required a permit to do it. So, trying to be cooperative, we went to go get a permit three months ago. We had been jacked around on that permit for three months. And for some reason, right before we met with the mayor's office today, the permit was issued. It was kind of funny how that worked. But this morning, they met with the contractor, said, oh, you have to add two more things to the drawings, which they never asked for in the past. So for three months, we had been jacked around on this porch. And it's not like we didn't want to do it. We're doing way more than, than we should be doing, which I really don't care. But we've been jacked around for three months. This is typical. I manage properties all over the area. This is the only town I have problems with. So that's about it. And mayor, you have, you have a copy of all this in your office? And yes, your assistant was very helpful today.
Thank you, Mr. Kirch.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Sunny.
Welcome, Sunny. You have three minutes.
When you are a candidate running for a mayor, you knowingly avoid telling the voters you are going to increase the taxes. You knew as a candidate, tax increase affects the outcome of the election. No one will vote for you. Why tax increase was not mentioned for 10 months while you were campaigning? Somehow Aurora residents were informed right after the election property taxes might increase. You are a candidate, knowingly avoid talking about tax increase to affect the outcome of the election. It is a crime in the state of Illinois when a candidate knowingly lied to the voters. Maybe they should have voted for Richard Mayor Irvin. He did not campaign to increase taxes. So we had another choice other than you. You do not explain to the voters while you are running for 10 months campaign why tax increase was needed in Aurora, Illinois. Don't you have a tax revenue coming from the new casino? That's why we gave you permission last time. You got the vote for the casino. According to the press, Fox 32, to quote them, "It's not often that a mayor interests office telling residents he's going to have to raise the property taxes." Thank you for the press for finding out that. You are alderman-at-large, attending finance meeting. You didn't know that Aurora was in financial crisis for the last two years when you were alderman-at-large? You are trying to tell residents right after the election, April 2nd, while they are trying to certify the vote, tax increase is coming. You think 200,000 population is stupid? They, they could have voted for Irvin. Illinois has some of the highest property taxes in the nation. Higher taxes will drive residents away from Aurora. Higher taxes affect lower-income residents, especially the black community. Landlord will pass higher taxes to the tenants. Renters cannot afford their rent. High property taxes can force low-income residents into debt and risk their homes for tax sales. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunny. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
If Curtis Wilson would like to speak again, he is the last person signed up.
Mr. Wilson, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. So Sunday, June 19th, 2022, the inaugural Juneteenth flag raising occurred in Aurora. More than 200 people were in attendance. Ricky Rogers was rightfully honored for 21 years of local celebrations. City Council voted to actually make Juneteenth a paid city holiday in early 2022. That was Resolution 22-084. Monday, June 19th, 2023, the City of Aurora hosted its 12th, I'm sorry, second annual Juneteenth flag raising. Mayor Jalen Smith, 19 of Earl, Arkansas, was our guest. The first Mr. and Mrs. Black Aurora made their debut. Hundreds were in attendance as well for this flag raising and youth summit. Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, the City of Aurora held its third annual Juneteenth flag raising. Hundreds were in attendance as well. Our once-proud City of Aurora, under this new administration, has intentionally decided to dishonor Juneteenth with the calculated surprise elimination of the Juneteenth flag raising. The weaponized incompetence, such that just one and a half weeks ago, our beloved friends for another cultural group were cheerfully acknowledged and were celebrated with flag raisings, awards, and speeches. But somehow, for the descendants of slaves, continuing the Juneteenth flag raising was now a burdensome, loathsome chore to continue. How disgusting and alarming. In Aurora, not only was Juneteenth treated as a hallowed observance just in general to commemorate the end of slavery, locally, it was doubly meaningful, as if we were also honoring the passing of the first African-American member of the city council, the late Ward Seven Alderman Shakita Hartburns. How hypocritically depraved, in that before taking office, this new administration promised to continue the cultural celebrations of all the peoples, but instead has begun insidious proliferation of spiteful ineptitude and outright circuitry buffoonery. Juneteenth is a nationally recognized holiday to commemorate the official end of slavery in these United States of America. When slaves in Texas were finally informed that they were emancipated, when Union troops read them the Emancipation Proclamation. The Emancipation Proclamation went into effect on June 1st, 1863. So for approximately two and a half years, the slaves in Texas remained slavery before learning of their freedom. Black Aurora is not monolithic, and such representation is, and visibility is what matters and is important. No one from the new administration asked the African-American Heritage Advisory Board, a duly-appointed, city-sanctioned Board of Community members to provide feedback about the erasure of Juneteenth from the city's calendar of events. There was no discussion of plans, alternatives, challenges, et cetera. But I thought the new administration campaigned on community engagement with all stakeholders, nothing but dirty lies and wanton hypocrisy. Juneteenth, like all cultural celebrations, is a reflection of the beautiful tapestry that is our diverse community. For this new administration to, however, cultural flag raisings are nearly, merely an incumbent useless expression of a bygone era that does not serve the political ambitions of tone-deaf ideologues. City Council, I know you care, so I have here a meaning of what the Juneteenth flag actually means, and I'll pass this out to you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do now.
Okay. If there's no more speakers, we will move to the committee reports. If I could ask the temporary chairwoman, Wanny Garza, to give the BZ and E committee report?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, we met on June 11. The first item in the order, and the item in the agenda is 25 days of 401, an ordinance vacating the city's man and the property of 400 Mercy Lane in County, King County, Aurora, Illinois, 60506.
If there's no other questions, this item will go on consent.
Okay. Next item is 25 dash of 477, an ordinance vacating a city's man and the property located in the southwest corner, Independence Drive and Constitution Drive in King County, Aurora, Illinois, 60506.
Consent.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
Next item is 25 dash of 478, a resolution authorizing execution of the enroachment is eastman and maintenance agreement with CR Aurora Land LLC for a portion of the property located in Independence Drive in the west of Constitution Drive related with the Haight Day final plan.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
Next item is 25 dash of 0109, a resolution approving the final flat for Wheatland Crossing subdivision, Phase 2A, and vacant land located in Ogden Avenue near South Fransworth Avenue.
Consent.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Buck?
Thank you. Can we have a brief presentation on the next three that are together?
So the next three agenda items don't require council consent. They're direct-to-consented items, but if you'd like to offer a presentation?
Sure. My name is Stephen Braubel, planner with the City of Aurora zoning division. So we do, we have representatives here from, from Forestar and D.R. Horton. As far as the approval, this is just the final Platten Plan for Wheatland Phase 2A and 2B. The preliminary Platten Plan for this was approved in early, I believe, early 2024. So the final Platten Plan we have here is in substantial conformance with the, with the preliminary Platten Plan, zoning requirements. The building elevations were approved with the preliminary. So here we're just looking at the layout of the site. It's 50 townhomes in the northern section, 14 single-family homes in the southern landscape plan. So if there are any other questions for staff or for the petitioner, we can answer those.
Alderman Buck, do you have any specific questions?
Yeah. Firstly, the building seems to be going very well, as I pass by every day. Couple questions. The first question, on the drawings, it says they're going to put in a playground. In the joint, it says the road, but it doesn't have a road name. Where exactly is the playground going to go?
Yeah, that's a good question, alderman. If we can pull up the, John, if we have the final plan up. In the northern portion, I'll just describe it while it's coming up. In the northern portion, Phase 2A, there's Circle Road, kind of in the middle of the townhomes. And you can see on the plan that there is, there is a playground there. There's some playground equipment, open space. There's some landscaping there.
Unfortunately, with teams, I can't see a thing, but I, I trust you.
Okay.
My second question is related to these three and Phase 1. We had extensive discussions with the developer. We're going to be extending the stacking lane on Farnsworth. We needed to get a timeframe on that. We were very fearful that we would be putting in a number of homes, and people would be moving in, and that upgrade of Farnsworth would be last. And the problem would already be there. We wanted to see when the upgrades of Farnsworth are going to happen in relation to the rest of the project.
Is that something you can, yeah, no, we, we have a representative here from Forestar who can answer that, that timeline question more directly.
If you just say your name and your organization with.
Yeah, Joseph Kubik, land development manager with Forestar. NTI has been finishing the dry utility locates for the Farnsworth off-site improvements. I plan to actually award the contract at the end of this month and have them start in July. I want to have the Farnsworth improvements done before we even get into Phase 2, which will be at the end of this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions, Alderman Buck?
No.
There's no action needed on this item and the next agenda items. Would the clerk continue to read them in? I'm sorry, Alderman Garcia, go ahead.
Okay. So is consent for the 25-0110?
No consent.
No need to go to consent. There's no action needed.
So now we're going to then 123, okay. 25 dash of 399, a resolution approving revision for the final flat for the INC Bose Division. 25 dash of 399, a resolution approving revision for the final flat for the INC Bose Division at 400 Mercy Lane and establishing Getaway Foundation Resource Division.
No action needed.
Okay. Next one is 25 dash of 400, a resolution approving a final plan for Getaway Foundation Resource Division at the 400 Mercy Lane for a health-related facility for not-for-profit use.
No action needed.
The next one is 25 dash of 438, a resolution approving the final flat for Mason Subdivision in vacant land located on 1127 Talma Street and 1129 Talma Street.
No action needed.
Next one is 25 dash of 472, a resolution approving the final flat for Lot 13 of Liberty in Eola Subdivision in vacant land located on the southwest corner of Liberty Street and Nor Eola Road.
No action.
Next one is 25 dash of 473, a resolution approving a final plan on Lot 13 and Liberty in Eola Subdivision located on the southwest corner of Liberty Street and Nor Eola Road for a car wash single bay.
No action needed.
Next one is 25 dash of 474, a resolution approving the final plan flat for Lot 12 and Haight Day Aurora Subdivision in vacant land located on the southwest corner of Independence Drive and Constitution Drive.
No action needed on this item.
Next one is 25 dash of 475, a resolution approving the final plan on Haight Day Aurora Subdivision located at the southwest corner of Independence Drive and Constitution Drive for a row dwelling party wall, 1130 use.
No action needed.
We conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Okay. For the Finance Committee, Alderman Messiakos, if you'll give the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met on June 12th, 2025, to review the following items. 24 dash 0726, a resolution authorizing the execution of joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois, the execution of Phase 3 construction engineering services agreement with HR Green, Inc., and then not to exceed amount of $706,956, and the appropriation of $2,100,000 of rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for the Sullivan Road reconstruction project.
Consent.
No objection, this item will go on consent.
Item 25 dash 0199, a resolution authorizing the execution of the joint funding agreement for federally-funded P.E. right-of-way with the state of Illinois for right-of-way authorizing the execution of the standard agreement provisions, joint improvement projects on the state highway system, and the appropriation of rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for Montgomery Road and Hill Avenue intersection improvement.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
Item 25 dash 0403, a resolution authorizing the execution of a third amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Cities of Financial Empowerment Fund, Inc., and the City of Aurora, expanding the FEC expert partner scope of work to include the small business boost and to receive the $90,000 grant upon full execution of this amendment.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
Item 25 dash 0419, a resolution approving funding support payments to VNA in the amount $250,000 in 2025 and $250,000 during 2026, for a total disbursement of $500,000 in support of the recently-constructed Bloom Haven campus.
Consent.
Mr. Minnick, if you could provide some more insight.
Good afternoon. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Bloom Haven is a mixed-use, excuse me, sorry, thank you. Bloom Haven is a mixed-use redevelopment of the dilapidated site of the former Copley Hospital campus, just south of the downtown of the City of Aurora. It represents a $129 million investment in the community. The Bloom Haven site incorporates senior housing, medical offices, a school administration building, a community park, and Bardwell residences, which includes 99 studio, one- and two-bedroom apartments. In addition to the amenities described, the developer also leased a portion of the campus to VNA Health for the construction and operation of a health clinic to serve the campus and the surrounding area residents. VNA Health provides healthcare services at several locations throughout the city and regionally. VNA fills a need by providing quality, affordable healthcare regardless of a patient's insurance status or ability to pay. Their services are crucial for community well-being. The Bloom Haven Clinic was envisioned to provide an array of services to the area, including primary care, mental health counseling, immediate care, women's health, obstetrics and gynecology, pregnancy care, and pediatrics. The clinic cost approximately $8 million to construct and equip. Due to the nature of the services provided, the city wished to be supportive of the efforts of VNA to bring quality, affordable healthcare to the neighborhood, and to that end, the city pledged a grant contribution of $500,000. However, the pledge was not included in the city's 2025 budget, and the council has not approved the dispersment. Accordingly, no city funds have yet been dispersed. The grant of support was discussed at length during the past two finance committee meetings. The pledged financial support was initially intended to be released upon the completion of the clinic and the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The clinic was completed in April of 2025, and a certificate of occupancy was issued at that time. In the interests of moving forward, the city and VNA have come to agreement that $250,000 of the pledged support will be paid within 45 days after council approval, and the remaining $250,000 of the city's pledge will be included in the city's 2026 budget and payable prior to June 30th, 2026. The current timeline calls for the city to prepare a legal agreement based on the term sheet that is contained in the Legistar packet. The resolution authorizes the mayor to execute the agreement so long as it is in conformance with the terms approved by the council. Payment of the first installment is to be made within 45 days, and the second, I'm sorry, within 45 days of council approval. Second payment will be made prior to June 30th, 2026. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may, or committee may have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Are there any questions of the council?
I have a question.
Alderman White.
Yeah, so, and I'm coming in at the tail end of this, so I'm just trying to understand the context behind it and the funding, so the $500,000 was not included in the budget. Is there, do you know a reason why for that?
I believe it had to do with the timing of the letter and the agreement as compared to where we were in the budget process. By the time the budget, those were received, the budget was fairly far along in the process in terms of the staff review and approval of that.
Got it, okay. And so then, where's this $500,000 coming from?
We will be taking $250,000 from some interest earnings that we have on the casino bond proceeds. We still are holding approximately $25 million, or roughly half, of the casino bond proceeds in an investment account, and the 2026 payment would be determined as part of the 2026 budget process. That we'll be doing a little bit later on. That's one of the reasons why we bifurcated the payment and had it go into two installments.
So, the second installment will be included in the budget then?
In the 2026 budget, yes.
Got it. So then, so with the initial 250, is that taking away from any other, any other initiatives that the city has?
Not, at this point in time, those funds had not been earmarked.
Okay, got it. No further, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Any further questions for Mr. Minnick?
I don't have any questions, but the response is, yes, they could have been earmarked for something else. We're going to keep it unfinished, Mayor, if you don't mind.
This item will go on unfinished business. And then, just quickly, I want to say thanks, Lenea, for your flexibility, and I don't think this was any fault of your own, we appreciate the work that VNA does in our community, and thanks to you, Mr. Minnick, for working overtime to help us find some resources to cover this unanticipated cost.
Thank you.
Alderman Messiakos, continue.
All right. Mr. Mayor, item 25 dash 0465, a resolution to approve GoGo Grandparent as the replacement contractor for the City of Aurora Ride Solution Cars Program through December 31st, 2025, utilizing the remaining budget funding, not to exceed $1 million. This is to help supplement the challenge with our existing vendor not being able to keep true to the terms of the original agreement and being able, fortunately, to find, the staff being able to find a replacement for the remainder of the term.
I believe that there's a question, Alderman Franco.
It's not $1 million, it's $100,000.
Did I say?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I stand corrected, $100,000.
We just say $900,000, let's pay them.
So, just to be clear, so the rest of the council knows that we had lost our vendor to provide senior citizens with their rides, our office took a number of emails, phone calls, and handwritten letters from senior citizens who also approached me, and I just want to say thanks to Katrina Boatwright for coming up with this solution at the last minute. We'll have a very short gap where we are not able to offer those rides, but appreciate your work on this. Thank you. No further questions, that'll go on consent.
Item 25 dash 0466, an informational presentation on the acceptance of a $2,500 grand award from Petco Love. No action needed on this one, Mayor. Next item, anybody have any questions? I mean, this is about pets. Sure, all right, very important.
No questions, we can move on.
Okay, all right. Item 25 dash 0481, a resolution authorizing the execution of real estate contracts to purchase properties in the amount of $50,800 and appropriating rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for the Sullivan Road reconstruction, Edge Lawn to Golden Oaks project.
No further questions, this item will go on consent.
Item 25 dash 0488, an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 48 of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Municipal Utility Service Water and Sewer Rates and Establishing Rates for Said Services for the Annual Periods Beginning July 1st, 2025 and July 1st, 2026.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
Consent, it is. Item, our last item, 25 dash 0495, a resolution authorizing appropriation of rebuild Illinois bond funds and/or MFT funds for Phase 2 Design Engineering for New York Street Bridge Project.
Consent.
Consent.
Consent. And Mayor, that is the end of the report from Finance Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Messiakos. Now, I'll ask Alderman Carl Franco to give the PHST Committee Report.
Lady, Mr. Mayor, the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee met, sorry.
Mike, no.
The Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee met on June 10th, 2025, reviewed the following items. 25 dash 0289, a resolution authorize the acceptance of Anthem Excavation and Demolition Incorporated as the contractor to demolish 306 North River Street and 316 North River Street, Aurora. These are vacant properties in this repair. Anthem was the lowest responsible bidder, because Anthem will be used on both, we have a reduced price for each, and IHDA funds will be used for 316.
Consent.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
Next is 25 dash 0376, a resolution authorize the acceptance of Anthem Excavation and Demolition as the contractor to demolish 630 Hammond Avenue, Aurora. This property is also vacant, and in this repair, IHDA funds will be used to pay for up to $40,000 of the $64,000.
Consent.
Consent.
With no objection, this item will go on consent. Quick question.
No, I just, just a comment, since these demolitions are in the sixth ward, I just had a comment on the second one, the 630 Hammond Avenue, I think it was these here as well. It is my hope that we can consider, as a city and as a council, that this lot, even though it's, it meets our legal definition of a lot, it's really small, like, was it 5,800 square feet?
A little bit over 6,400.
Over 6,400 square feet. We would consider dividing it in half and giving it to the next-door neighbors for a dollar.
We actually own the lot, we have a judicial deed on it, so there's no need to purchase the lot. So, if that is the direction that the mayor and the administration wants to move forward, and that's your decision, but we do own the lot.
And so, just so the public and maybe some new members of the council understand the reason we would be doing this and giving it is so, currently, we are not collecting taxes on it, but when we give it to the property owners and divide it, then that property owner who accepts, if they accept, will pick up the tax bill and mow the lawn. We don't have to mow the lawn anymore.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Similar to a tiff.
Thank you, Alderman Seville. Are there any other questions on this agenda item?
You can go on consent.
Okay, this will go on consent, thank you.
Next item is 25 dash 0483, a resolution increasing the maximum number of Class D downtown fringe onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Anita Jardine LLC, Ward 4. Petitioners looking to offer food and drinks for their special events.
Consent.
Consent.
With no objections, this item will go on consent.
Next is 25 dash 0484, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A packaged sales convenient store beer and wine only liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from B&amp;K Food Mark, Ward 4. This resolution is due to new ownership, but the use of the property will not change.
Consent.
Consent.
No objection, this item will go on consent.
And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the PHST report.
Thank you, Chairman Franco. Now, I'd like to have Chairwoman Wani Garza for the second time tonight, but the third time offering the IT Committee Report.
Yes, Mayor. We met on June 9th. The first item is 25 dash of 364, a resolution to approve the awarding on the Fire Station 3 renovation bid for 2T Future Construction LLC in Inglewood, Illinois.
Consent.
No objection, this item will go on consent.
Mayor, a quick question, if I may.
Alderman Messiakos.
Can somebody explain to us how this funding comes about, so the community understands? Is this for the fire station remodel?
Is this question for Finance?
Good afternoon, Alderman, Assistant Chief, Mike Kaufman. Yeah, this is a capital improvement plan funding that was approved back in 2023, that's where the money initially came from.
Yeah, it's handled as part of our normal operations and capital improvement program. It's part of the pay-as-you-go, it's not included as any part of the bond proceeds or any kind of a bonding structure, if that's the question, Alderman.
And it was in the budget, I believe.
It was in the budget, in fact, I believe it's been planned as, yeah, for a couple of years, as Chief Kaufman had.
Okay. Any further questions?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions, this item will go on consent.
Okay, next item is 25 dash of 383, a resolution authorizing the city to enter internal highway authority agreement and associate environmental and immunity agreement supplemental with Flip 25 LLC for property located at 1125 Aurora Avenue.
Consent.
With no, with no objections, this item will go on consent.
Next item is 25 dash of 451, a resolution to execute an one-year contract with Allied Door, Inc., for garage door preventive maintenance and repairs when option for two additional years.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
25 dash of 460, a resolution authorizing the purchase of eight replacement mobile columns lift from Mohawk Lift LLC for $119,122.10.
Consent.
With no objection, this item will go on consent.
25 dash of 461, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Hunter Alignment Machine for Mohawk Lift LLC for $67,588.25.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
25 dash of 479, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the Fax Metro Water Reclamation District for General Services incorporation of various projects.
Consent.
No objection, this item will go on consent.
Consent, okay, and we conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairwoman Garza. And Alderman Bug, Chairman Bug, if your audio works and you can give us the RAP Committee Report.
It'd be my pleasure. The RAP Committee met on June 3rd, 2025, and reviewed the following items for your consideration. 25 dash 0321, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Aurora Code of Ordinances titled Buildings and Building Regulations to adopt the 2024 I-series of Codes and Recommended Amendments.
Consent.
Any questions? Thank you. Any questions on this item? No questions or objection, this item will go on consent.
And the companion, agenda item 25-0405. Oh, actually.
That's an item for discussion, leftover from RAP.
Yeah, that was, it's the same item, actually. So, yeah, that was just the informational from our committee meeting before, so it's the same item. And that concludes the report.
Mayor, if I may, on item 25-0405, I had a conversation earlier with Chief John Curley, even though it's for informational only, will there be changes to this item? Can you provide clarifications, or is it going to disappear after, after this evening?
No, this ultimately will need city council approval. The, we do have one trailing codebook that needs to catch up with this set of codebooks for the International Property Maintenance Code. And it would make sense to adopt them at the same time, so that the same code references are being referenced across all of our enforcement group. I did, Alderman Messiakos actually did ask, the document that we posted in Legistar is not clear enough to illustrate the changes that were being proposed. So I have two of 10 documents that I'm happy to share with you, that's a redline document, it's much clearer on what the changes are, and I will be, I just didn't, didn't quite get done fast enough to upload all of the PDFs for the redline documents. But we would be requesting that this be held at committee of the whole until the additional codebook could catch up with it.
Okay, just a quick question for you. Alderman Messiakos brought up 25-0405, which was the presentation. Are you asking to hold up the presentation, or are you asking to hold up 25-0321?
Actually, I think it's probably 25-0321 to be held here. I am prepared to do a presentation of the process and the necessity of adopting the codes. I honestly think that, one of the reasons why I thought it important to bring this up to you and leave it here is this, this action is adopting a codebook series that's almost three feet off the floor. And it's, it's the result of two and a half years' worth of work. It's a lot of complex technical jargon that I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to give you all an opportunity to look at our work and, you know, talk through the, the actual text. But I am prepared to make a presentation on how we came here and the committees and the public-private partnership we use from committees to make a recommendation, this recommendation to you.
Alderman Messiakos, would you like to see that presentation at the next COW meeting?
I would like to see it when they're ready. I don't want anything rushed. I like the fact that you brought up that it's almost three feet off the floor. I mean, we've talked about it when, I'm probably going to date ourselves, but when both came out of university, they gave us a free codebook, and it was just one, about two inches thick. It's really, it's really.
Well, our amendments are not, are not, are not that high off the floor. They're, they're only probably, might be getting close, close to half inch thick, but the codes that we're adopting are that, that high off the floor, yes.
Yeah, so.
And are you looking for a presentation on the whole thing, or just the amendments that the City of Aurora has made to this codebook?
I, I'm interested in the amendments. I mean, I, I look at the codebook on a regular basis, so I know.
Either way, the presentation that I have ready is really to talk about the process we went through, the people that were involved, and the necessity for adopting a code in this calendar year. So I'd be happy to do that, and then give everyone the opportunity to look over the documentation, to ask more technical questions when you've had time to digest it. And if you want to do that in a public forum or offline, let us answer questions, however you want to ask your technical questions, we'd be happy to do that.
So I think your interest, Alderman Messiakos, correct me if I'm wrong, is taking a closer look at the amendments, which I believe you could probably share with the council, and then we can work to get a timeline together to offer a presentation on specifically what those amendments are. Is that close to what you're asking for?
I've already expressed to, I mean, Chief Curley, what I'm looking at personally to correct, but I, like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to get involved in this presentation. I'd be more than happy, anything that he's willing to, to provide us here as a presentation, that's great. I think if we went too far into the weeds, I don't know if everybody would, would be too excited, so, or thrilled about it. It can get very dry, but I'll leave it up to staff, if that's okay, Mayor, when it comes down to it.
With, with no objection from the council, we can hold this item here, and I'll work with Mr. Curley to come up with a timeline for that presentation.
Sounds good, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council?
So, we're going back to 25-0321 as a whole?
Correct. So next on the, and that concludes the RAP committee report. Thank you, Chairman Bug. For new, new business, we're going to go through all three items, we'll put the last two on unfinished, and then we will hear from Alderman Franco on the Alderman's Corner, and then we'll go into closed session. So if the clerk will please read the first agenda item under new business.
25-0491, a resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement between the City of Aurora and Family Service Association of Elgin in support of the Aurora Police Department Crisis Intervention Unit for the period of July of 2025 through June of 2026.
Any questions on this agenda item, presentation?
I was just going to speak briefly, Lieutenant Andy Walcott with Aurora Police. This is just a resolution to authorize renewal of our agreement with the Family Service Association of Greater Elgin, who we've been our social service partner, providing us with social, police social workers at the police department since 2020, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council on this item? Alderman Franco?
Lieutenant, what's the cost on this? I didn't see it in the packet at all.
The cost, it's, it's within the contract.
Maybe I missed it then.
And it's kind of broken up over two budget years, so I do have a note here, and I can tell you the year-to-year cost. So the cost, the budgeted, and this was budgeted in, in the 2024 budget for multiple years. The cost for this current year, the total cost was $442,000. 340, I'm sorry, 442,347.36 for this year, for the entire year. And then for next year, we're budgeted for 4,000, 455,617.78.
Thank you.
And just so the council's aware, we did receive a memo from Congressman Foster's office that they have submitted grant requests to help fund this program, but again, we're, everything at federal level is kind of in question. We haven't received acknowledgement that that's gone through its final process, but we are pursuing other ways to fund this. Any other questions for Mr. Walcott? There's, is there any objection to putting this item on the consent agenda?
Okay.
No objection, this item will go on the consent agenda? And if the clerk will read the next agenda item?
25-0501, a resolution approving the appointment of and authorizing an employment contract with Jordana Weissaki as corporation counsel.
I think we're going to put this item on unfinished, the next two, just because we will go into executive session. And if the clerk will please read the next agenda item?
25-0514, a resolution approving the appointment of Allison Lindberg as Director of Sustainability.
This item will also go on unfinished business. And with that, that concludes the new business. If Alderman Franco would like to share his Alderman's Corner from the fifth ward.
Sure, I will be as brief as I can. This will entail no video and no pictures, just me talking, so, here we go. Fourth Ward Cleanup Day was held May 3rd. As I've mentioned in the past, we split the ward in half each year, north and south of Galena, we do half one year and the other half the next year. We typically utilize three sites, so is, is to reduce the wait times. That went very well again this year. The fifth ward, along with the fourth and sixth wards, have a shred event scheduled for June 28th at Jefferson Middle School. I believe this is our sixth year doing it as a group. Two weeks ago, Factor HelloFresh held a ceremony highlighting their generous donation of a refrigerated vehicle for each of the five local food pantries. Each was painted with the name of the particular pantry on it. They had donated one last year to the city. Each van costs about $70,000, and they've been a great partner in helping out not only the food pantries, but the Kiwanis and other not-for-profits. Bravo Furniture, which is located in the old Walmart in West Plaza, is, was supposed to be open in February. They're not open quite yet, they're high in schedule somewhat. There's a few issues that yet to work out with the city, but I think soon we should be getting them open, which would be nice to fill up that old Walmart, it's been open, vacant for quite a while. Prairie Meadows, the residential subdivision targeted for seniors on Prairie. The models are built, and they are accepting offers for future homes now. Rental Town Home Subdivision, previously known as Muse of Orchard Lake, now Hayday, which we talked about earlier, should be starting construction soon as the process of vacay, as a process of vacating and easement had happened. And this is located on Constitution Independence, just north of Galena. Also, the 340-unit townhome development on Orchard where the Myers property was to be built, they should be starting soon as they had to navigate an easement issue with the Holiday Inn next door, so that should be starting in the ground soon. The frontage property on the east side of Orchard Road adjacent to I-88, which the Toyota Corporation owns, now has interest from a developer, which is good news, proposing 10 of the 22 acres to be residential, 10 to be commercial, and two for water retention. However, this is just in discussion, so there's really no moving on it quite yet, these are just what the developers are looking to discuss. And finally, the sound barrier. I'm very frustrated on this one. At the end of 2024, we're pretty much set with starting the engineering and the potential SSA process. We have secured about $4 million of the $4.1 million cost from the city, county, fifth ward funds, various state legislatures, commitments, and the DCO grant. Financially, that left us, left us with about 2% cost to each of the 74 adjacent homes for the SSA. About $75 per year for a 30-year SSA would have been what the homeowners would be paying up in the SSA. And to put that perspective, we have not found an SSA in the city where the residents paid less than 2% of the cost for their improvement. So this is, is a really good deal. Then we hit a few speed bumps. Because the existing fence, which we plan to replace, is not contiguous with other portions of the fence, we found that we may have needed up to four separate SSAs, and so we took a number of months to research that, and we finally gotten that number down to two SSAs. Then a few months back, we discovered that $500,000 committed about seven years back from then Senator Oberweis is nowhere to be found, leaving us to search for other sources to bridge that gap. And hopefully that, us working with the administration, with this administration, with help from Springfield Washington, they can fill that gap. So unfortunately, this has been an ongoing project for a number of years, we all know that, and we just hit a number of problems along the way. So I don't think it's going to be a problem getting it done, but we got to go back out and search for some more money to get this really close to the endpoint. So that's, that's the update on that, and that concludes my fifth ward report.
Thank you, Alderman Franco. I have some good news. In addition to, in addition to adding to the report, we did have a very productive meeting with HelloFresh and the residents, yourself, myself, the two at-large Aldermen, and there's a lot of progress. And the rest of the city council, probably in about two months, I think they'll be, or maybe even six weeks, bringing some agenda items forward through the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to make some changes to that property, and then we'll probably have a complete package ready to share with the public as some progress has been made there. And then, Nick, you did have a conversation day with our lobbyist in Springfield, if you, quick update?
Yeah, I'll be brief. So I do have some good news in regards to the Orchard Sound Wall. $250,000 was secured for it. I have a meeting tomorrow to figure out the logistics of that, but more money has been secured for the.
So, we hit a DCEO grant of $250,000. Is that in addition to that?
That's in addition to that.
Okay, that's good, that's good, all right, so we're.
And you're still chasing down the half million of Oberweis money, right?
That's something they're still working on, yes.
Okay, well, that, that's, that is good news, thank you. Thank you. So, so if we can get, so in essence, if we can get the other $250,000, we're pretty close to pulling the trigger, which we've been waiting for a long time. Because once we do it, it's certainly not going to get done this year, but we'd hope we can get it done next summer if we get everything done by this fall, they can start the process in the spring, we go forward, so that would, that would be good news. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman Franco. Okay, at this time, we are in need of a closed session, so pursuant to the following section of the Open Meetings Act, Section 2C1, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, and dismissal of a specific employee of the public body. And being that there is no further business to come before the committee of the whole, after the closed session, can I entertain, we will adjourn, and I would like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session and adjourn upon completion.
Motion for that?
Motion by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Nunes?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Benavos?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Larson?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. We'll enter into closed session, and we're going to try and stay up here, so Alderman Bug can participate via video teleconference, so we'll give the public about five minutes to clear out, and if people need to.